Good evening. Would like to welcome you all to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Board of Education. It is Monday, December 2. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ross, will you please call the roll?
Pastor Moody.
Present.
Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Dr. Randles.
Present.
Mr. Ross, present. Ms. Slade.
Present.
Dr. Baker.
Present.
Ms. LaGranne.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, not present yet. President of the Fall.
Yes.
We have a quorum with eight.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Thank you. Celebrations.
Thank you. Dr. Fahl, I would ask John, him hope to come forward and hear his coming.
He is. I can tell by that walk.
Good evening.
Good evening. Madam President, members of the board, Madam Superintendent, it's my pleasure to
be here today for a celebration, one that many of you know already. Our friends at the Kent County Prevention Coalition have been working with us for a number of years to work with teens on everything from, basically to improve the community, to reduce the use of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs among children. They've been a sponsor with us of our big back-to-school celebration and have great engagement with our schools and with our students. With me here tonight is Michelle Stitt. She is sitting in for her colleague Shannon Cohen, who had a last-minute emergency. So she'll be here to tell you a little bit more about the Coalition and some of their upcoming activities.
Absolutely. So I thank you for taking the time to see us this evening. Again, like John said, my name is Michelle Stitt. I serve as artistic director for the Kent County Prevention Coalition. So my main thing is that I want to thank you for partnership. We've had extensive partnership throughout GRPS middle as well as high schools, Southwest Community Campus, Ford Middle, Innovation Central High, Union High, City High, excellent partnerships. Our big thing, oh, I should have passed these out before.
Yeah, I'll take it.
I was over. Thank you so much. What's coming around is an executive summary for our Above the Influence Kent County Youth Summit. It's an annual youth summit that we have, that we have, actually, one coming up, sorry. And we've been working extensively with middle and high school students, sixth through 12th graders. Our summit that we had this past spring, we had upwards of 1,000 students descend upon Grand Valley State University's Allendale campus. Excellent turnout, record numbers, no incidents, well-behaved students. It was a Friday afternoon, and we told it as a day on, not a day off, where students are still learning, but that learning is reformatted. So we are in the process of planning for Youth Summit 2014, which will be held again on a Friday, Friday, May 2, 2014. We'll be returning to Grand Valley State University's Allendale campus. And so that I can kind of paint the picture for you, there's a video that I believe is queued up, which will take you to summit in three minutes. It's video footage of summit from this past spring's event. So it will definitely give you a snapshot of those highlights. So.
Are you guys having fun?
Yes.
Yes.
It's very exciting.
Are you guys having fun?
Yes.
Yes.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you guys having some fun?
Yes.
Yes.
It's still ridiculous.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
...country, um, started by the, uh, the mayors of New York and, and, um, Philadelphia. And what City United does is really just provides, um, um, I guess, a national network of sorts for, um, city leadership to really, um, move the needle on gun violence within urban areas. And, and in the city of Grand Rapids, maybe we aren't as challenged as, uh, some of the larger cities by sheer numbers, but when you look at percentages, obviously gun violence is a huge issue in, uh, in the city of Grand Rapids and one that negatively affects our school district, which in turn obviously affects the, the, just, uh, the quality of life in our city as well. Um, so what City United has done i- is really provided a, a platform for these mayors to sort of join arm in arm to really, um, not just verbally take a stand, but to, uh, share things that are going on in their respective cities. Um, there were some, some things that, uh, some unique, I guess, collaborations with school districts in regards to this area. Um, you know, so in general, really just as an opportunity to really see what's going on around the country and, and hopefully begin to institute some, some, some new things here in Grand Rapids and maybe add to some of the things that we're doing well already and sharing some of those things with others. Um, and, hm, I was really just, I really don't know what to, to, to start, so I'm gonna cut it short, 'cause I have two big folders here of things that I tried to flip through to decide what I wanted to share, but it was really just a lot of quality things going on, some really unique collaborations with, um, city government, school districts, um, uh, public libraries, um, just a, 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 a wide range of different things going on. But we do have sort of, um, not technically a follow-up meeting to, to the conference, but, but as far as some of the collaborative efforts between city government, the school district, and, um, local colleges, um, actually Dr. Baker and I are taking part in a meeting, um, next week to draft a, a strategy to increase post-secondary completion, uh, in the city of Grand Rapids. And obviously, GRPS is, um, uh, a key element in that as far as preparation and whatnot. So, really just a lot going on. And, and again, National League of Cities, uh, nlc.org, if anyone has the interest in, in looking things up a little bit more, they put a lot of things on their website. And the particular part of the conference that I attended was again, the Institute for, um, Youth Education and Family.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Questions?
No.
Questions for him?
No, I think it might be interesting, though, that, um, in Grand Rapids, Grand Rapids Public Schools and the city, we meet every other month.
Mm-hmm.
Routinely. And, um, Mr. Ross is on that committee also, as, as Dr. Faubert and myself, and I think that's it this year. So, we do meet regularly to make sure that we maintain those efforts with the city of Grand Rapids.
I, um, see, um, Ms. Heemster out in the, in the audience there that I know attended with you.
Yeah, she did.
I'm expecting perhaps on the agenda for that next committee, there will be some kind of report out. Great. Thank you. Uh, next on our agenda is action items and donations. My computer died, so I don't have, I'm forgetting what donations. Do we have more than one to act on?
Um, there was two that were in the, that are in the consent agenda, but there appears to be another one from, uh, Spectrum Health.
Okay.
That was added here.
Okay.
Post-finance.
Do we need to vote on these separately, or?
No, the other two are in the consent agenda and have already been voted on.
Okay. And this one is the one?
Yeah, it's the donation from Spectrum Health funding for seven smart boards for the science classrooms at Innovation Central High School, donation amount of fifty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Is that a motion, Mr. O'Connor, for acceptance?
It's a motion.
Support. Questions regarding that?
It's good.
Mr. Ross, can you?
Uh, Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Randles.
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Legrand.
Yes.
Reverend Matthias.
Yes.
President Faubert.
Yes.
Uh, donation motion passes nine zero.
Next, we have the consent agenda grouping. Uh, do I have a motion? Do you know how to go about this?
Do I have to make a motion to, uh, pull those things from consent?
Mm-hmm. You have to make a motion for approval, accepting that.
Sure. Uh, then I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, accepting e, uh, the purchasing agenda, specifically items one A and, uh, or Roman numeral one A and Roman numeral two, uh, A and then Arabic numeral one.
You're, you, you wanna make them, you wanna approve everything in consent except for the purchase?
Except for that.
Just, just do it without the purchase.
Just do it without the purchase agenda, okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion without the purchase agenda then.
Do we have support for Mr. Legrand's?
Support.
Motion? Uh, do we, uh, call the rule for approval for the consent agenda?
Uh, Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Randles.
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Legrand.
Yes.
Reverend Matthias.
Yes.
President Faubert.
Yes.
Motion for consent agenda minus the purchasing, uh, agenda passes nine zero.
Do I now have a motion to accept the purchasing agenda?
So, most.
Support?
Support.
Discussion.
Uh, thanks. I, uh, I think we all have the purchasing agenda with some detail on it. Um, I wanted to discuss two items in that agenda, uh, prior to a vote on, on the agenda itself. The first is, and I simply want to, uh, make the other board members fully aware of this, the two items really tie. That's item number one A and, uh, number two A one. And so, and I'd rather talk about the second one first. Um, we did approve as part of our congen- consent agenda, receiving a fairly large donation from the Kellogg's Foundation. Um, the donation was in fact approximately five hundred thousand dollars. There was a total grant of approximately nine hundred thousand dollars, um, which covered several years. Um, there was some discussion in finance about this. The, um, the immediate, uh, purchasing agenda item is, uh, for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for funding for, I'm guessing that's one of the three years, uh, that that donation would have covered roughly, if you're all with me so far.
Is that item number one?
That's item number two A one. And this is really, um, this is frankly my central item of concern. The only, the only reason to mention one A is because it ties in, um, it ties in thematically, because we're actually talking about, um, spending money with the same group. And that group is, um, uh, ch, 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 oh, I'm sorry, what's, not Kent ISD, I'm completely, I'm completely wrong.
National Equity Foundation.
Which one was it?
It's two A two.
It's two A two. Sorry. I was, I was faked out by the three hundred thousand.
Gotcha.
Um, it's two A two. Um, and that's, uh, to, that's, that involves the National Equity Foundation, as does, um, one A. So, the, um, the concern that I had in, in, um, finance, and it was a concern that I, uh, frankly didn't have fully answered, was that we had a line-by-line item for how that three hundred thousand dollars was going to get spent. And the detail that we provided made it look like, um, the money was being spent on, we, we were spending a, a lot of dollars for relatively few hours of work by this organization, let's put it that way. So, um, and, and that may be, in fact, an illusion. It may be that they're doing a lot more work than they showed on their schedule. It may be that there's work on the back end. There may be other things that are accounting for their figures. But the, the detail sheet that they showed us, which isn't in fact even part of your packet, for example, showed us paying, I believe, forty-two thousand dollars at one point for what looked like, uh, two people for four half-day sessions, which sounds like paying forty-two thousand dollars for about forty hours worth of work. Um, now, you know, I think one of the things that this board has to be careful about always is how we handle money, whether it's money that we're given to spend by an outside organization, whether it's our general fund money. Um, one of the reasons why it's great that we got, um, an in-house attorney this year was that we get, we don't have to pay lawyer's fees, um, to, to out-of-house counsel. Um, however, lawyer's fees don't come in. I've never seen a lawyer's bill in my life that billed out at a hu- at a thousand dollars an hour. Um, so my concern was doing that rough emotional comparison between what looked like a thousand dollar per hour rate from these folks, um, with, for example, skilled attorney work coming in substantially less. Now, I have really, uh, a question, and, and I don't know if Superintendent Neill, you wanna, um, have someone else answer this besides yourself, and I'd, I'd, I'd welcome the answer. But, one, I'm always concerned that we honor our debts. So, if we are, if this is payment for, uh, work that's already been done, then I think we should honor that payment, whether or not, uh, whether or not we want to scrutinize the, the levels of payment. But if this is, uh, payment for a, for future work, I personally would like to see more detail on, on how exactly that's being costed out before I approve the expenditure. And I don't know how the board members feel about that.
So, if, if I can respond to you, um, as I shared during the, um, committee meeting for finance, I agree that, um, with the way you suggested for billing, we had just not, we had not done that. So, that's one. Um, and we left it on this purchasing, um, agenda because it went through finance in order for the entire board to see it. But we have placed a call to National Equity. What you suggested makes total sense, that they bill as attorneys do. Um, it's just not the way that we have done that in the past. So, so I just want to, um, be real clear that it was a great idea and, and we will do that with National Equity.
And I wanted to be sensitive, that we're not putting you in a spot where you've got some time-sensitive issues that we're dealing with.
Not gonna put me in a spot at all.
Okay. And so, if we've got time to, to ask for more detail on this.
Absolutely, absolutely. No, I thought it was a great suggestion, and I told, shared that with you before, that I thought it was a great suggestion. Um, but rather than to pull it from this agenda, um, we felt that the entire board should see it. But no, we absolutely agree, and we'll do that. It's a great suggestion.
Then I, I guess I would move that we table that portion of the purchasing agenda. I think that'd be appropriate, and, and, uh, ask for more detail from the organization.
Absolutely.
Now, that being said, I want to, um, give kudos to our in-house attorney, who's very good at bargaining. And that relates us to, uh, item one A, because, uh, Ms. Pitts did manage to get us a substantial cost reduction, um, on item, item one A, which was work from this, uh, from this organization, um, for essentially unrelated matters. And she got us a substantial reduction in the bid there. And I was satisfied with, uh, that, that had been appropriately scrutinized. And that incidentally came out of general fund dollars. And so, I want to thank our in-house, in-house counsel for saving us money there. So, I only brought up that first one partly to, to say thank you, but also because I wanted to point out that there were, the organization, that same organization's involved in both line items. So, I'd make a motion to approve the pitch, uh, purchasing agenda, uh, but, or do I make, tell me, John. Do I make a motion?
You need to make a most, a motion to postpone item two A two until a later date, which you need to identify.
What he said.
Do we have support for that?
Support.
Any further discussion regarding that?
Are we gonna fill in that date, or are we?
Good catch.
But, uh, until the next subsequent board meeting, or we have, we have a work session on Monday, uh, next Monday, so we can do it then, too.
Probably not enough turnaround time.
Right. Because what we will, uh, give National Equity, um, time to do is go through and bill us according to an hourly rate. And I don't know that they can turn it around in just a few days, so. But as soon as they do, we will bring it back.
That'll be the, our next regular scheduled board meeting will be the sixteenth.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, I'd move that we postpone it until the sixteenth.
For action, support.
Any other questions? All right. Mr. Ross, can you call the vote on?
Uh, vote on the postponement?
Mm-hmm. The postponement.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Randles.
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Ms. Legrand.
Yes.
Mr. Matthias.
Yes.
President Faubert.
Yes.
Uh, nine oh, agree to postpone the National Equity, um, purchasing vote until next board meeting.
Now, we had a motion to approve the purchasing. It was still out there, so.
You can call that.
Now, that was, that motion was rescinded, correct, Mr. Legrand? So, now we need another motion to approve the purchasing minus that item.
I'll move it again.
It's part.
Any further questions? Mr. Ross.
Uh, Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Randles.
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Legrand.
Yes.
Reverend Matthias.
Yes.
President Faubert.
Yes.
That motion passes nine zero.
Uh, this issue and thinking about Dr. Baker's report at the last meeting, just, I just want to encourage fellow board members to take time, if possible, to watch the video of the committee that you are not on. I think it's, there's always a lot at those committees, and if you're not on that committee, you miss half of what's going on. Something you can do while you're doing your exercise bike or something, you know. That, that's, you know, not scintillating entertainment, but it, um, it is worthwhile to be in a form-
Don't say that to all of our watchers who are on their exercise bikes right now.
It is important, though. It is important. We, we, you know, we allocate significant funds to have those, um, videotape for transparency, but also for, to, um, for the, access for the board to see what occurs in those other meetings. So, we are at discussion items. We have none. Public comment for non-agenda items?
Uh, we have two, uh, Mr. Chris Sane and Mr. Lawrence Duke Turley. You guys can make your way down.
Come on down.
One to the table and just one, um, in a row behind. And I believe, uh, Mr. Sane, um, he left something with us, um, yeah, there you go, the Grand City piece, um, on your tables there.
Yeah. Mr. Sane, this is your first time making public comment, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah. I think I've seen you down here before. You have, um, three minutes, and, uh, we can give you a one-minute warning, if you would like.
That's fine. I probably won't need that long.
All right, great. Welcome.
Yep. Thanks for having me. I wanted to, in, in my support for Superintendent Neill, GRPS as a whole, um, I wanted to formalize, um, what I already do for the students of GRPS. Um, annually, I go into the schools and I, I look for high school seniors at all the high schools here in town. Um, but because GRPS is where I'm from, before, I'm a product of, the focus is definitely primarily there first. Um, and I go into the schools and I, I look for high school seniors that's eligible, um, that's looking to go to a two or four-year university, who's already had their acceptance letter, um, and who meet certain criteria that we have at Grand City. And, um, what we do is, through submission of essays and transcripts, unofficial transcripts and different things that are required, um, we give them a scholarship. And in addition to that scholarship, we, we just maintain a relationship in college. I know what it was to be a first-generation college student, the challenges they face. Um, and so, we support GRPS students far beyond their days at GRPS. And so, I wanted to formalize what I do already, um, and whether you guys want it to or not, it's something I will continue to do. But I wanted to make it something that you guys, as a school district, is all in on. Um, and so that maybe some of my work can be streamlined, so the counselors are already aware to contact Chris or contact Grand City about any seniors that's looking for some money, looking for some opportunity to, um, at the next level, have a little financial assistance. And so, I wanted to see if, um, you guys would be open to, um, a formalized agreement or partnership of some sort with myself or my faith-based, community-driven organization, um, and the work we do for GRPS students.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sane.
Uh, Mr. Lawrence Duke Turley.
Mr. Lawrence, would you like a one-minute warning?
Neat.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, good evening.
Good evening.
Grand Rapids Public School Board. Um, as you just heard, my name is Lawrence Duke Turley. Um, I am a twenty-three, twenty-three-year-old male, born and raised here in Grand Rapids, Michigan. Um, the reason I'm here today is because, um, since last year, I felt out about, um, four volunteer applications. I repeat, volunteer applications, to be a part of Grand Rapids Public Schools. Um, what I do within Grand Rapids is just different community events to uplift our youth. Um, if you guys have heard, my first big event was that Trayvon Martin march. Um, before that, I've done number of, um, different events, um, for Grand Rapids as a whole. Um, my application was denied because I do have a felony on my record that's being expunged. Um, the process, my lawyer told me it'd take a year because of how much I can pay him, not because of how long it'd take him to get it off. Um, I'm here asking if my application can go in front of you guys, if we can meet another time, and you could see, you know, what my charge was and why it's been expunged, you know, because it was a false accusation, of course. Um, when I first walked in here, Mr. Ross came to me and stated that he'd like me to come to the stop-the-violence, um, thing that's going on on Saturday. Um, a number of people in this audience know me personally, because I am, I was a Grand Rapids Public School student. And I can say myself, you know, I faced those same exact challenges that mainly young men in this community face. Um, just me being in the school building will mean a lot to the kids at the school. I could be that guy to help stop those kids bringing guns to school, find out the kids who are still bringing guns to school, you know, just, just that whole base. So, um, nice to meet everybody, glad you guys know me now. So, um, if my application could please be approved, I could help you guys do what everybody's saying they want to do, but not actually doing. No disrespect to the teachers or the securities or the principals or none of that. But I'm a student, you know, and I'm, I'm, I'm the youth, you know. I am the voice of the youth, if I may say. I probably have the largest following in Grand Rapids, Michigan, by far, you know. And like I said, it's a number of people here today who knows that this is true. And just, I don't want my past, what I've done, to hinder what I can do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's comments?
I would like to thank our partners for their donation, for their support. Michelle, thank you for what you are doing for the district.
Ms. Slade.
I wanted to know how the turkey trap went.
I'll report on it in my comments.
Well, you know, I was gonna sing, but I had trouble with the turkey.
Mr. O'Connor. Dr. Randles.
No comment.
Mr. Legrand.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, we have a student representative on the board, and welcome. Uh, the way that things are structured, of course, we don't have a teacher representative, but I think if, I, if, I think if we had one in spirit, it would probably be Ms. Wilson. And I just wanted to point out that I appreciate having her eyes on the ground and her, uh, comments on all the things that she comments on, from the mundane and practical, like, gee, it'd be nice if we had a more intelligent way to turn these, uh, turn these rooms down from eighty-five degrees, uh, to all the other things that she comments on. So, thank you for your commitment and for sticking with us and for staying engaged. It's really appreciated, and I appreciate how much thought and effort you put into keeping us informed, because after all, you're in the classroom and we're not. And that puts you in a much more privileged position in a lot of ways. So, thanks.
Reverend Matthias.
Um, I had the privilege of, of, uh, going to the Kent County Prevention Coalition, um, event, and it was, it was really exciting to see the energy of these, of these young people and them learning about, uh, really how, how to stay clean. And so, so that was exciting. Um, the other thing is that, um, it's really exciting to be able to have a principal come to you and say, I just had a student reveal to me that, uh, there's a home situation. And then being able to, to meet that need as a, as a partner, and then the other partners that we have across GRPS. So, that's really exciting, as, as you are saying, a lot of these partners that, that, you know, are giving donations, but also those that coming to our schools and are meeting one-on-one with our, with our students. So, that's really exciting to be able to do a home visit and, and meet a family, and then be able to figure out how do we meet that need and remove those barriers. And again, it's, it's working, folks. And, and, and again, it's such a privilege to be part of, to be part of that network that's happening throughout our city, really. Uh, people saying, hey, I'd like to adopt a family. And then finding, connecting that dot, um, that's really what it's all about. So, I just want to remind us that, um, you know, our voices count, as, as you are, are saying, that other end of folks that, that go to college. I was at that other end of people visiting me when I went to college. And that was such, uh, an amazing thing to have certainly home, home-cooked meals come to college, but, but to know that, that that connection doesn't stop there either. So, thanks.
Thank you. Pastor Moody.
Yeah, I want to encourage Mr. Turley, uh, to continue doing his after-school programming. If, um, he has the felony and he can't do anything, there's nothing to say that he can't continue to work outside as long as it's positive. And that would be a benefit to the children in our community, especially the GPRS kids. I know that there's a lot of individuals with felonies, and yeah, there's a rule that says some of them can't do something, and still we have to abide by the law. And that's important for us. Also, I want to say, it's good to see Mr. Chris Sane. I remember when he was growing up, know his family very well. And I'm glad to see that he is also involved in getting, uh, game on for students and making sure that they do go to college. Um, I know, coming from a single-family home, it was difficult for me to go to college. Mother couldn't afford it. I was the first one in my family to graduate from high school and college. So, uh, there's a lot of children out there that like, especially males, and we need to push that on both sides of the board.
Thank you. Dr. Baker?
Well, I will report on the turkey trap. And, uh, first of all, I, I gotta give kudos to Kurt Johnson and his staff, 'cause it was pretty incredible. They had to, 'cause there was a concert of Van Andel the night before.
That's right.
And like, good news.
So, I, I ambled out of bed at seven and got downtown, uh, by seven-thirty. And those guys had, had been setting up the course and, uh, feel it since two-thirty in the morning.
Oh, no.
They spent all night, Thanksgiving night, uh, setting up. And if you remember, it was snowing. So, um, it was a, it was a tough night, but the vent went off flawlessly, and, um, it was, it was a lot of fun. And I think it was a real celebration of Grand Rapids and, and Grand Rapids Public Schools. And, um, so it was really a fantastic thing to be a part of it. And the kids all got those little, uh, turkey trophies. So, they went home with turkey trophies. My son was pretty proud of his first trophy, so, um, having finished the one K. So, anyway. And I know Ron Gorman started the race, did, um...
Is he still running? Is he still running?
Did he?
He ran.
Anyway, let me know. Uh, education committee, we will have, uh, our December education committee next Tuesday, the tenth. And we will be discussing, we're, uh, Ms. Evans and I are finalizing the agenda, but we will be discussing likely the, um, some of the changes that the state is making to assessment in the state, um, and, um, and some follow-up on our discussion on priority schools. So, I encourage people to come out or to tune in for that. Thanks.
Well, what happened to Mo? I thought she was gonna be singing at the turkey trap.
It's about the turkey. I just failed to show up at seven-thirty, but I was up at four-thirty. Mr. Ross?
Um, I guess my comments are probably similar to Pastor Moody's. I definitely want to, um, give some, uh, kudos to Chris and Mr. Turley, who apparently left the room. Um, you know, just for, sometimes it's considered an anomaly to see, um, you know, young black man, twenty-something, really giving of themselves, um, for others and sacrificing their time and resources and whatever the case may be. And I guess I just ask all of us to encourage more of that, because, uh, some of the things we do have going on in that district could be, um, counterbalanced to some degree if there was more of that, um, you know, right, wrong, or indifferent. As a ten, twelve, thirteen-year-old boy, I'm more likely gonna listen to what Mr. Sane has to offer me than I am maybe some other people. And again, right, wrong, and indifferent, that's reality. Um, so I do think we definitely need to, I guess, be as supportive as we can to, to responsible young, uh, leadership, um, in Grand Rapids. So, just want to give some kudos to those two and whomever else who may fall in that category.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Mr. Jones, your predecessor sort of, um, insisted that he needed a spot at the end of the board, and so I'd like to give you an opportunity.
Um, at this moment, I really don't have no comments, but, um, I have a concern, we're not concerned, was kind of comment. Um, is there any possibility that we could have, um, like a, um, I was thinking like a box where students were, uh, this is called, um, like, they can name it as what do you want? And the kids can, uh, write down, jot down what do they want to see different in the school? And they put in a placement box. And then at, at one meetings like this, we can collect the boxes and read them off.
It's well within your powers. Well, within your power to do that.
It's a great idea.
Go right along with some of our plans.
That's right.
We really need input from students.
Absolutely.
And I guess then you come and report on some of those things you find of interest in there, particularly things that, um, seniority put in there repeatedly or whatever the case.
Yeah. And to do it digitally as well, of course. Great. All right. No comment from me. Meeting adjourned.
Great.
Sting?
Hey, I want your-